Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome our family, our friends, and our distinguished guests for this special event this evening. I am Vice President Irene Bustamante Adams and call this Oath of Office meeting on January 6th to order. The time is 5:30 PM. We'd like to begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is the territorial homelands of the Nahuatl, the Muapamal Band of Paiutes, and the Las Vegas Band of Paiutes. I would like to... So let's take out our phones first and put it on silent. Let's do that. Make sure you're not the one in the audience when the phone is going off. Put it on mute. The other housekeeping item, here's the overview of the special day that we have today. We're going to ask our four members to take their oath of office. We're going to have them join us here on the dais. Then we're going to do public comment, and then as soon as that is over, they'll make some comments, and then the four newly elected trustees will go do some media interviews first, and then come back and celebrate with us. Okay? Hopefully those will be brief so that they can enjoy the family, friends, and the guests that we have here today. So we're going to go ahead and move to Agenda Item Number One, and that is for our flag salute, our pledge of allegiance. Let me let you know how it's going to go. We're going to welcome the Cheyenne High School, which is District C, Ms. Tamika, for the presentation of colors. We're going to ask trustee... You're going to do it?
Sure.
Okay. Ramona Espers-Draffigan to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. With the Cheyenne High School will be Jaclyn Moran, Mark Valdez, Nazari Coleman, Diana Maganda, Kayla Monroy, and Estrella Garreta. And then please stay standing for the National Anthem, which will be by Pali Verde High School District E. It'll be a soloist, Angelica Ribeiroz, and Director Barry Isbell.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight Were the rum-parts we watched, were so gallantly streaming? On the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there; oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
All right. We're going to position our microphones in order. At this time, we're going to move to Agenda Item 102. That's the adoption of the agenda. I will entertain a motion now to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Madam Vice President, members of the Board, I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I have a motion by trustee Cabazos. Do I have a second? Trustee Barone?
Second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. All in favor, please mark. Next, we're going to do our oath of office. This is how the order will go. It'll be Ms. Stevens, then Ms. Dominguez, Ms. Henry, and this, Bia Sadi. We'll have, for the first one, Emily, if you'd come and take your place up here on my right, your left. And then we'd like to invite the Honorable Danielle Piper to come up from the Eighth Judicial District Court, Department 7.
Okay. Raise your right hand. I, Emily Stevens...
I, Emily Stevens...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support...
That I will support...
...protect...
Protect...
...and defend...
And defend...
...the Constitution...
The Constitution...
...and government of the United States...
And government of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
And government...
And government...
...of the State of Nevada...
Of the State of Nevada...
...against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Whether domestic or foreign...
Whether domestic or foreign...
And that I will bear...
And that I will bear...
...true faith...
True faith...
Allegiance...
Allegiance...
...and loyalty...
And loyalty...
...to the same...
To the same...
Any ordinance...
Any ordinance...
Resolution...
Resolution...
Or law...
Or law...
...of any state...
Of any state...
...notwithstanding...
Notwithstanding...
And that I will well...
And that I will well...
And faithfully...
And faithfully...
...perform...
Perform...
...all the duties of the office...
All the duties of the office...
...of School Board trustee District A...
Of School Board trustee District A...
...on which I am about to enter...
On which I am about to enter...
So help me, God...
So help me, God...
...under the pains and penalties of perjury...
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations.
Trustee Stevens, will you please join us on the dais? Next, for District B, we'd like to invite Lydia Dominguez and the Honorable Erica Mendoza from the Eighth Judicial District Court, Department 27. And Ms. Lydia, can you share the names of your two guests?
These are my sons, Vincent Ruiz and Aiden Ruiz.
And yes, on this side. Awesome. Judge Mendoza, please proceed.
You. Please repeat after me. I, Lydia Dominguez...
I, Lydia Dominguez...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, defend, and protect...
...the Constitution and government...
The Constitution and government...
...of the United States...
Of the United States...
...and the Constitution and government...
And the Constitution and government...
...of the State of Nevada...
Of the State of Nevada...
...against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Whether domestic or foreign...
Whether domestic or foreign...
And that I will bear true faith...
And that I will bear true faith...
And allegiance...
And allegiance...
...and loyalty to the same...
And loyalty to the same...
Any ordinance...
And the ordinance...
Resolution...
Resolution...
Or law of any state...
And law of any state...
...notwithstanding...
Notwithstanding...
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
...perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties...
...of the office of...
Of the office of...
School Board trustee District B...
School Board trustee District B...
...on which I am about to enter...
Of which I'm about to enter...
So help me, God...
So help me, God...
...under pains and penalties...
Under pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations.
Trustee Dominguez, will you please join us on the dais? Next, we have Tamika Henry, the Honorable, and welcoming the Honorable Belinda Harris, North Las Vegas Justice Court, Department 3. Ms. Henry, can you share who's holding the... Who's joining you on the up there?
Absolutely. Joining me up here is my daughter, Zanai Smith.
Thank you.
Please place your left hand on the Bible. Please raise your right hand. Good evening.
Good evening.
And congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I state your name...
I, Tamika Henry...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support...
That I will support...
...protect...
Protect...
...and defend...
And defend...
...the Constitution...
The Constitution...
...and the government...
And the government...
...of the United States...
Of the United States...
...and the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
...and the government...
And the government...
...of the State of Nevada...
Of the State of Nevada...
...against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
...whether domestic or foreign...
Whether domestic or foreign...
And that I will bear...
And I will bear...
...true faith...
True faith...
...and allegiance...
And allegiance...
...and loyalty to the same...
And loyalty to the same...
Any ordinance...
Any ordinance...
...resolution...
Resolution...
...or law...
Or law...
...of any state...
Of any state...
...notwithstanding...
Notwithstanding...
And that I...
And that I...
...will well...
Will well...
...and faithfully...
And faithfully...
...perform...
Perform...
...all...
All...
...the duties...
The duties...
...of the office...
Of the office...
...of trustee...
Of trustee...
Clark County School District...
Clark County School District...
District C...
District C...
...on which I'm about to enter...
Of which I'm about to enter...
So help me, God...
So help me, God...
...under the pains and penalties of perjury...
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Thank you. Congratulations, trustee Tamika Henry.
Trustee Henry, will you please join us on the dais? At this time, then, I'd like to invite Lorena Bia Sadi, and also... And also the Honorable Erica Mendoza, Eighth Judicial District Court, Department 27. And also the Honorable Erica Mendoza, Eighth Judicial District Court, Department 27. And Ms. Lorena, can you introduce your guest?
This is my mother, Martha Cardenas.
Right. I, Lorena Bia Sadi...
I, Lorena Bia Sadi...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, defend, and protect...
The Constitution and government...
The Constitution and government...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution and government...
And the Constitution and government...
Of the state of Nevada...
Of the state of Nevada...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Whether domestic or foreign...
Whether domestic or foreign...
And that I will bear true faith...
And that I will bear true faith...
Allegiance...
Allegiance...
And loyalty to the same...
And loyalty to the same...
Any ordinance...
And the ordinance...
Resolution...
Resolution...
Or law of any state...
Or law of any state...
Notwithstanding...
Notwithstanding...
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
All the duties of the office of...
All the duties of the office of...
Trustee, Clark County School District, District E...
Trustee, Clark County, District E...
On which I am about to enter...
In which I'm about to enter...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Under pains and penalties of perjury...
Under pains and penalties of perjury...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Trustee Bia Sadi, please join us on the dais. Let's give another round of applause to the four newly elected. At this time, we're going to go in reverse order, but we're going to allow each trustee in order to share some brief remarks. Trustee Bia Sadi, we're going to start with you first. Thank you, Ms. Ramona, for helping us. I know we haven't trained to turn these things on, so we are learning as a group. So, thank you, and please proceed.
Good evening, everyone. As you have seen in the past few years, I have stood behind that podium, and I've spoken out for my kids. And there were times where my opinions weren't welcomed, or my views, and I was silenced and escorted out of this building. But while I was being silenced, our voices were growing stronger. And I want to tell everyone, this seat comes with the message that we want our values represented. We want our conservative values that our country is founded on to be respected and represented again. I want to thank all the community of District E for putting their faith in me. I promise I will fight for your kids the same way I have fought for mine. To all the patriots who walked doors with me through the triple-digit heat, they proved that their thirst to save our country was greater than the thirst of this desert heat. I also want to thank all the members of My Children's Advocate for having stood by me. We don't know how to give up. We are bold and relentless, and we have won today. We have lived up to our name. Thank you for always praising me and showering me with support and praise. And I also want to thank the unspoken hero in the room, my husband. With him, without him, none of this would have been possible. I also want to thank my kids for being the purpose, for giving my life purpose and being the reason I even tried. I also want to thank my mom, my dad for being here, for instilling conservative values in me. My mom, who retired recently after 35 years of working as a Head Start teacher in California, she was pregnant with me. She worked as an assistant to a teacher that she admired so much that she named me after her. And for that reason, I have known my whole life the impact that a good teacher can have on those around them. And so I want to be here and fight for our good teachers and for our students. Thank you all so much for being here and for supporting me. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to hear with, from trustee Henry.
Here I am. Hello, everybody. I didn't prepare any words because I'm just ready to get to work. Our district, our district deserves so much better, and I know that we can do this, but it's going to take all of us. I do want to thank my family, my children, my husband, my mother, my best friend that was working with me on this campaign. Oh my goodness, I, everyone that supported me through the campaign, I really appreciate you. Also, I have to say thank you to my ancestors because I absolutely stand on the shoulders of greatness, and I am ready to continue the work. I've had several mentors throughout the years through the Head Start program. And so I know that with me, I know that we can bridge the divide that happens. I know that we have things in common. I've heard Head Start mentioned here already, and so I am extremely thankful for my Head Start roots. I'm here to serve. I'm ready to serve. I'm ready to move our district forward. One of my mentors, Dr. Tom Pierce, told me, "Always do the right thing, and you will never go wrong." My other mentor, Dr. Rory B. Sip, has always said, "Love children and mean it." So when we are making those decisions, again, we can never go wrong. And to my fellow trustees, I just, I just want to say thank you all. Looking forward to serving with you all. And always, if we meet children where they dream, we're going to always get it right. So I appreciate you all. Thank you, family and friends.
Thank you. Now we'd like to hear from trustee Dominguez.
It turned on all by itself. Nice. Thank you. You know, I have, I've taken an oath close to this a few times in my life in the military, and I, I do feel the weight of the responsibility of this incredible opportunity that we have here. This isn't just about, you know, our personalities or, you know, our views and our leadership, but this is about shaping the future of the children here in Clark County. My, I, I'm so humbled, my sons are here to witness this, and, you know, I look at their faces, man. They're going to make me cry, but look over there. So it, you know, our children are not just our future, they're our present, and they deserve every opportunity to learn and grow and, and succeed in a world that is constantly changing. I wanted to take a moment to honor my, my late father, who, without his journey, I wouldn't be here today. And his education ended at the sixth grade. He had to work on a farm in Mexico, and so he stopped in sixth grade. And his strength, his wisdom, his values taught me many things about life, and his sacrifices that he made are the reasons why I'm here today. And I'm committed to ensuring that every child has the opportunities that he never The people of Las Vegas have spoken. The community wants change, and I want to make it clear that we will deliver the change. There will not be business as usual. We are headed towards a fantastic future, and I am excited for it, and we will have a, a change in Clark County School District. Thank you.
Next, we're going to hear from trustee Stevens.
Christopher Moore once said, "Children see magic because they look for it." A few years ago, I had the awesome opportunity of meeting this young man. He was entering his junior year at Basic Academy. He had kind of a athletic build, and some of the guys on the wrestling team, they pulled him aside and they said, "Hey, man, you should, you should try out." So he said, "Okay." So he tried out, and he was a natural. He'd never wrestled before. He had an amazing first season, and everybody was so excited to see how he would do his senior year. He came back, and nobody saw him that much. He was going through some stuff. See, this young man was a youth experiencing foster care, and he had kind of given up. His attendance was low, and so his grades began to drop. But he had a team that supported him. They rallied around him. They said, "Hey, man, we're going to help you. We're going to get your grades up. We're going to help you do this, and you might miss most of the season, but we're, we're going to help you." And he believed them, so he tried. And he finally got his grades up. He was back in the season for regionals. Went to regionals, he placed. He went to state, and he placed. And instead of quitting after that and going back to the way he was living, he stuck with it, and he graduated a few months later. And then, through one of his teammates' advice, he decided to join the Army. I recently heard he finished AIT school and is doing very well. I don't know what it is about us adults if we stop seeing the magic or if we stop looking for it, but it is all around us. It's in these classrooms. It's in the hearts and minds of the students, just like this young man, just like those wrestlers. It's in the hearts of our educators. This board is unlike any other. Our eyes are open, and we see the magic because it is here. I am incredibly excited to be part of something so magical. Thank you.
Let's give a round of applause for our four newly elected trustees. At this time, we're going to have a special student performance, "Home Means Nevada," by the Silverado High School Choir, and that comes from District A. They're being led by Director J.C. Nichols. Great job. In this point of the agenda, we're going to go to public comment. These are for items not listed as action items on the agenda. Just as a reminder, during this portion, it's offered for individuals wishing to speak on matters within the jurisdiction of the board but not listed. Each individual wishing to speak during the period will be given three minutes to address the board. The public should be aware that the board is unable by law to deliberate or take action on items not listed on the agenda in an effort to be fair and consistent. Therefore, we had some people that did call in, and we'll start with those first. We have two areas where you could give public comments, so I'd like to call Sheila Moulton first and then Eva Simmons. Sheila, you could be here on my right. And Ms. Eva Simmons, are you in the audience? No, then we would ask Aiden Dominguez if you could come up here on my left. Right here. Okay, please begin the clock.
Thank you, and I am so glad I didn't miss this meeting. I watch a lot of them at home, but that was spectacular. My name is Sheila Moulton. I served on the School Board of Trustees from 1999, 2011, long time ago. I also serve as the president of a Better Choice PAC whose mission statement is, and I quote, "Help elect and support Clark County School Board Trustees who are professional, principled, and student-focused." However, this statement I'm making represents my own personal views. Today, I want to share just four brief messages. Number one, I thank you, each and, each and every one of you for your service, and a special thanks to those who may not be here tonight that have served their terms over the past few years. I want to congratulate to the incoming trustees, and I look forward to working with each of you as we move forward in civility, forward-thinking, development of policies for the benefit of nearly 300,000 students and their families, some 40,000 employees that educate and inspire our students, and our two and a half million countywide community members who are depending upon you for the education of our future generations. My third point is the leadership of your organization is all-important to the work of a CCSD board. It is much more challenging than you can imagine. Until each of you may hold that responsibility of leadership, you will not know the depth of intricacies of these positions. To maintain a balance with the open-meeting law and keeping all board members informed on the dais in public meetings is a challenge. All board members must show patience and preparation through study of board documents and agendas. My fourth point is your actions and reactions as you proceed with the search for a superintendent are paramount in priority. Civility, compromise, and cooperation are mandatory. As you look at the past experience in the superintendent's search, you will see that unity is absolutely necessary. Personally, I've participated in three search processes. You will be under the watchful eyes of our community and the nation in this search, but most of all, the watchful eyes of quality candidates. Candidates will be reviewing your past meetings and... Candidates will be reviewing your past meetings and agendas, social media accounts, and news articles. They will be looking for a Board of Trustees that they can work with. Again, I encourage civility and compromise. Please listen to your search firm to find common ground without the use of any intimidation. I congratulate you all and thank you all for your service. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. I'm gonna ask Eva, I heard that she was in the room. Ms. Eva? Somebody says Eva, somebody says Eva. Ms. Sims, I'm gonna have you correct me in just a minute. I do want to say that for those who did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card, this is the yellow card. This is our process here. If you would like to speak on public comment, please do so now.
I answer to either Eva or Eva, so be comfortable.
Thank you, Ms. Sims, thank you. And wait, I'm gonna have Mr. Aiden go first and then transfer over to you.
Thank you. Madam President, Board of Trustees and Interim Superintendent Brenda Larson, good evening, my name is Aiden. Today, I just want to take a moment to congratulate my mom on this achievement, being elected into the School Board today. So I'll give a round of applause. Mom, as someone who's watched you work tirelessly for this moment, to watch you finally step into this role is so much more than just a personal achievement. It's about the change you're really gonna make for our community. You've always been someone who leaves with patience, kindness, and a lot of determination. Whether it was taking care of me or Vince, fighting for what's right, or just helping your community, you've shown me that real change is possible. I also want to take a moment to congratulate your fellow School Board members. It's really inspiring to see so many leaders come forward and serve our community. Together, you all represent what public service can achieve, a commitment to our families, students, and schools. Finally, let's see. This milestone is not just for you, also for our community. You've all spent the last six months listening to cries, tears, and just pain. Today, you're finally stepping into a position where you can turn those hopes into action, and I know you're all ready for it. As you begin this new chapter, I know you bring your strength, mind, and kindness to every challenge. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you, Mom.
Thank you, Aiden. Ms. Sims, if you'd begin, and I'd like to ask Dan Thomas, if you're here, Dan Thomas, if you could join me on my left side. Ms. Simmons, if you'd please begin.
Thank you very much, good evening. I'm here to congratulate all of you and to let you know that I am here representing Dr. Rebecca Rogers, who is ill tonight. She is President of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, a public service sorority. I want this board to know that we sponsor the award-winning robotics team at Kit Carson Academy, or whatever it is, International Studies. I forget, it's too much. And I especially want to acknowledge Ms. Henry, a member of our community. And I want to let her know that one of the service areas for Delta Sigma Theta is educational development. So we are available to assist you with research, building your network, whatever it is that you need to do. And whatever we do, we anticipate that it will benefit all of the students in the Clark County School District. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank the Deltas for their service in the community. Now, Mr. Thomas, is that right?
Yes. Can you guys hear me from here?
Yes, and one moment, Mr. Thomas. Can I ask Kristin Nygro, Kristin Nygro, if you could come up to the right? Thank you.
Okay, start. Okay, first of all, I want to apologize because I did not plan on coming today, especially with something so special for everybody here. Congratulations. Okay, I was here two years ago, and two years ago, I came here because I got fired at Shatter Ridge High School. I just sent you two big emails, I don't know if you read them or not. But anyway, the reason I'm here is because I'm trying to have a meeting with you guys. Okay, I just watch people take videos here. I got fired as the head coach of Shatter Ridge High School for taking a video at a club ball game that no one's ever seen. And I've never been able to have a meeting with anybody at the school district since then. I was with the CCSD for 11 years. I donated over $200,000 to the CCSD. I've done all kinds of things to help the school district, and I've never been able to get a chance to have a meeting. And so I wrote all this today. I've written, it's been over almost two years since this happened to me. Okay? And I have an attorney, I've met with five different attorneys and talked to every one of them, and they all said exactly the same thing, what I needed to do. But I refuse to right now, but I only have until February 3rd because that's two years from when I got let go. Okay? We won the state championship in 2022. Okay, I was Coach of the Year in 2022. Two weeks before the start of the 2023 high school season, I got fired for a video that no one ever saw, okay, at a club ball game, and I own the club ball team. Why? Because it was a principal's best friend at Shatter Ridge, who is Tracy Cannon, and Yvette Tippett, who's another principal at the school district, and her husband is at Shatter Ridge High School. Their son is the one that got caught vaping numerous times at the school, and I had nothing to do with it. They also had three other people come during this thing happened. They charged me with a bullying charge. I was cleared 100%. I'm gonna share this with you guys that the parents sent, okay? This was given to Dr. Jara two weeks after I got fired. I was here and on the news on Channel 8 TV, okay? There's a lot of things that happened. I'm requesting a meeting with you guys because if you do all the things you said... So my question is, how could everybody just take a video right here in public and not get fired? And I got fired for a video no one has ever seen, ever seen. And I would love to show it to you guys because I did it. I took a video of a kid that had been hurt three months before, okay? I have coached for 11 years here, nine years, or 10 years up in Oregon. I have never been verbally warned, written, warned in my life. I've owned five companies. You guys ever hear of MC Hammer? Steve McQueen? I'm an auctioneer too. I did that when he died. I've raised millions of dollars as an auctioneer, helping people. In the letter that I wrote to you, just so you know, I put in there that I would do that to help the budget that you guys are in trouble for, okay? I'm not here to sue people, I'm here to help people. That's all I've done my entire life. And so I'm requesting a meeting with any of you, any one person, because there's over 40 things, I got three seconds left, 40 things that happened, and I need to have the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Next, we'll have Kristin, but Jessica Jones, if you could join me here on my left, if you're in the audience. Jessica, thank you. Ms. Nygro, please proceed.
Perfect. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Kristin Nygro. I'm a strategist at Rex Bell Elementary, as well as a proud Executive Board Member for CCEA. It's both an honor and a privilege to stand before you today as we celebrate the election of our new School Board of Trustees. I'm so proud of all of you. I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to each of you. Your dedication, commitment, and willingness to serve our community in such an impactful role speaks volumes about your character. We're excited to see the vision and leadership you'll bring to the district. It's so welcomed at this point. As newly-elected Board members, you now have the distinct privilege and responsibility to guide our schools, influence educational policies, and ensure that every child in this district receives the support, resources, and opportunities they deserve. Your leadership will shape not only the future of our students, but the future of this community as a whole. I want to take a moment to emphasize how important it is that we work together. Being a partnership is going to be great for all of us. The stakeholders of CCSD, teachers, parents, students, support staff, and the broader community are all eager to work alongside of you. Our shared goal is to foster a learning environment that provides every student with the tools they need to succeed, grow, and thrive. As we move forward, we are committed to partnering with you every step of the way. We are entering an exciting new chapter in our district's history, and it is time for a positive change. I welcome that, I so welcome that. We know that through open communication, collaboration, and shared commitment to excellence, we will be able to address the challenges we face here in Clark County and celebrate the achievements to come. Together, we can create an environment where every student has a chance to reach their full potential because we know every single student deserves the best. Now, as newly-elected Board members, you bring with you a wealth of experiences, ideas, and perspectives that will serve the district and the students well. I have no doubt that with your leadership, CCSD will grow stronger, more inclusive, and more innovative in providing educational opportunities to our students. Once again, congratulations to all the new members. I'm so proud of all of you for running such an incredible campaign. We're looking forward to working closely with you, and we're excited about the positive changes that lie ahead. Together, let's create brighter future for all of our students and continue to build an education system that we're all proud of. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I would like to invite Kenny Belnapp, if you'd come and join. Are you in the audience? Okay, Ms. Jones, please proceed.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Vice President, Members of the Board. Interim Superintendent Larson Mitchell, for the record, my name is Jessica Jones. I teach kindergarten over at Hickey Elementary School, which is on the east side of Las Vegas. I'm also the Secretary of the Clark County Education Association. I wanted to come tonight to take this opportunity to congratulate you, Trustee Stevens, Trustee Henry, Trustee Dominguez, and Trustee Biasadi. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve on this School Board. I want to wish you all success in your role and all your responsibilities of your new position, and I look forward to seeing your work furthering the mission of CCSD so that our students can have positive outcomes, growth, graduate, and succeed in life. February is gonna mark the beginning of our 83rd legislative session. In this last session, CCEA worked very closely with our governor and legislators to secure significant funding for our education. Many of you on the campaign trail stressed the importance of wanting kids to learn and be challenged in the classroom. Many of you also spoke about wanting kids to be focused so that they could improve proficiency levels among all of our students in reading, writing, and math. I'm bringing this up tonight because I believe that this Board and CCEA share a common goal with one another in this... CCEA and this Board are committed to continue the work of improving education and advancing student achievement. And like my colleague Kristin mentioned previously, our organization would like to work with members of this Board during this upcoming session. So we want to be forward-thinking so that we can ensure that during this legislative session, we all win big for kids. Because ultimately, that's what we all care about, our students, and we want them to succeed and perform well. So again, congratulations on your new roles. I look forward to seeing you guys soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I'd like to invite Ed Gonzalez. Are you still in the audience? And Ed, if you can hear me, if you could come in, we'll be ready for you after Kenny. Please proceed.
Perfect. Good evening, Interim Superintendent Larson Mitchell, School Board of Trustees. For the record, my name is Kenny Belnapp. I'm a social studies teacher at Liberty High School, and I serve as the Vice President of the Clark County Education Association. First of all, congratulations are in order for all of you newly-elected Board members. It's exciting to see so many fresh faces up there that are eager to move our district forward. And after hearing from all of you this evening, I'm confident that you are all going to put in the hard work to ensure that we move our district forward. We can do some incredible work together, and that's the theme of tonight, is that we're coming together to help our community and help our kids raise the bar, to improve outcomes for our students. And if you prioritize this during your tenure, we can see the turnaround that CCSD has so desperately needed since I was in high school. Like my colleague Jess Jones just mentioned, in just four short weeks, four weeks, the legislative session will open. Last session two years ago, the theme was funding. We saw $2.5 billion coming into education, over $1 billion come down here to CCSD. The theme of this next session is going to be accountability. So I want to encourage all of you to not run from accountability, but to embrace it, to embrace it with us, to raise the bar, not just for a superintendent, for a CFO, a school board, a teacher in a classroom, a principal in the building, for everyone. We need to improve the standards so our students actually have outcomes that reflect the great work that we do here, day in and day out. As some of you know that have been around for a while, you know CCEA will be involved in these discussions around accountability. And we're looking for a partner to work with us on that. And we want this Board to be that partner. Because again, when we raise the bar together, the only people that will benefit from it are our students who matter the most. So if CCEA and CCSD trustee members work together, show a united front that we're committed to this accountability, to improving our schools, we'll have a lot of positive changes this next session. I look forward to seeing you all up there and committing to getting this work done for our kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Yasenia Gonzalez. Are you in the audience, Yasenia? Okay, please, on the right. Ed, please proceed.
Sorry, Madam Vice President, I'm not used to being on this side. For the record, my name is Ed Gonzalez. I'm the community member at Hickey Elementary School Organizational Team. First of all, congratulations. I know I had a chance to talk to everybody who ran during the primary when we hosted some forums. You guys should be honored, privileged to serve on this body. There was a call for change, and each change was different in each district. And so I heard you guys communicate with your constituents, now constituents, about what your visions are. And I hope this Board can work together. We haven't seen that at other points. You know, the reason why you ran is very simple, it's very noble. You want to help improve education here in Clark County. It's not easy, this job isn't easy. There's many times you'll be sitting on the dais just wondering, oh my goodness, I gotta listen to these comments again. It's a tough challenge. I know you guys have been going through your training throughout the last month or so, getting prepared for this moment. So I'm gonna congratulate you on that. We have challenges. I wish you luck in everything that you do. Just remember what you talked to on your constituents, remember to stay true to your values. Newly-elected members are very diverse in their opinions, which I think will be beneficial to this Board. But you guys spent months, maybe a year more campaigning, talking to parents, talking to community members, people who have children in the district, people who are teachers, people who work at schools, people who just live here who care about education. And sometimes you talk to people who just didn't care at all. And so just remember that in that moment, you know, we'll be able to work together and talk to you guys. You know, you'll hear from many diverse people talking about like some of their concerns. But just remember, don't forget, stay true to yourself, stay true to your district. So that's some of the stuff that you sort of just forget about, you know? The last couple of years, we've seen the Board, almost, I mean, I think the joke was it was almost like the Real Housewives episode of people going back and forth onto it. Just make sure your colleagues are just being respectful and working with each other. I mean, you know, I know many members of this Board, I don't always agree with you, but I always joke, I think about Commissioner Sager Blum, who I don't agree much with him on. If I agree with you 10% of the time, that means I get to work with you 10% of the time. You look at the positivity of it. And then finally, I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't mention this because there's so many people here in the audience. If people want to know how do they get involved, I will mention something very simple. Nevada Reading Week is March 3rd, starting March 3rd. We at Hickey have one of the largest ones. I know, Trustee Zemore, you're a trustee up there. I'll be inviting you there as well. But if you have an opportunity to go to a school, call up a librarian, call up them and say, hey, I want to read to a class. That's the easiest thing you can do just to get yourself involved. The kids love it. I got a Cat in the Hat outfit I bought for Halloween just for this Reading Week, so I'm gonna look a little silly this year. But other than that, congratulations to everybody. You've earned this. There'll be people saying, I don't know how they got up there. You know what, you were elected, you've earned this position, you've earned the right to be here. And it is tough to sit here to work on education issues. It's a blood sport. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Stephanie Kinsley. Are you in the audience? If you could come up to the left. All right. Ms. Gonzalez, please proceed.
Yasenia Gonzalez, for the record, all children need a voice until they can speak for themselves. That's what advocacy is. It is speaking from a place of love, demanding rights be met. It is standing up for a child in need, especially your own, our own. Congratulations to all, particularly my friends, Lydia, Lorena. That is what Trustees Biasadi and Dominguez have done, advocating for what is right for our children. I have faith that they will do that the way that they have fought for their own children. They will do the same for our children in the Clark County School District. With that being said, I hope that we can come together to help our special needs children by meeting their educational needs and also making sure that those working with our children have the proper resources and training to provide their appropriate public education. One of the many blessings being part of also the Special Education Advisor Committee, because that's where I am, is you get to see a lot of the numbers, and it's actually very sad. Clark County, in the years of 2023, 2024, had 3,223 restraints on our special needs children. You want to know where the other counties were at? Single, just double digits? So my question to you guys is, what are you guys gonna do to fix that? Because some of us have children that are special needs. Some of us attended schools here in the school district. Some of us give our time and volunteer, whether it's dads in schools, whether it's in ROTC, whether it's in the school district. What are all of you as a team going to do for not just special needs children, but for all? And I hope that when I'm speaking, that I'm giving the respect and attention. That's another thing that needs to change. Because that's a big problem, is you guys don't give us the respect. That needs to change. Thank you. With that being said, we need change. Obviously, we have it now. Congratulations, girls.
Thank you. I'd like to invite, I think it says Norma? Norma? I'm sure, okay. I couldn't read the writing. Thank you so much. Okay, Ms. Stephanie, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Kinsley. I'm one of the parents from My Children's Advocate. We fought very hard to get Ms. Lorena and Lydia exactly where they are. And through all that door knocking, I have to say, there was one common denominator that the entire public is sick of. And it's the lies that we're doing to our kids. It's the lies, you guys lied to them about the masks and the vaccines, which I can't imagine how silly must feel with a degree, thinking a mask was going to save you, and then following Fauci. And now we're lying to the kids with the race. I got chased out of this same room for saying that math skills and attendance have nothing to do with race. Has nothing to do with race. Has to do with a happy home. Single mother house homes are failing. And if we're going to, we can address that. But instead of we lie to our kids, instead, our teacher union dollars go to Planned Parenthood to kill off the next wave of students. Make that make sense. But anyhow, I do apologize. I'm here to offer you an opportunity to say you're sorry for all the times that you've lied about us and bad-mouthed us.
Ms. Stephanie, address the whole group.
I'm, no, you guys all have, you all have the opportunity to say you're sorry to us, to all the parents of MCA. I didn't want you to feel left out. Feel sorry to all the kids that you lied to by telling them their race is their identity, their sexual orientation is their identity. And really, let's apologize for chasing me out of here for saying it's more important to have a happy two-parent household, that that's going to make more of an impact on your children's success. And let's stop funding killing our future students. And let's get Planned Parenthood out of CCSD. Out of CCSD. Hope you guys have a great day. I wish you nothing but success in life. And, I'll put my shoe back on, that microphone's a little low. But again, you're lying to children when you tell them that their success in life is based off their gender, their race. It's a lie, and you know it is. And I think it's because too many people don't want to admit that they're failing as parents. So let's help these schools out by fixing our broken homes and give these schools a shot, okay, parents? Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Stephanie. Norma, Teri, I think it says Schuman. Are you in the audience, Teri? Okay.
Yes, my name is Norma Skurlock. I'd like to say congratulations to all the new trustees, but particularly Lydia and Lorena. We fought very hard, very hard. Been here, we've all been tossed out. We've had people disrespect us, talking on their phones while we were talking. I showed up here one day with the pornography that you were putting in schools. And four out of, I don't know, 10 of you were on your phones, not caring what us parents said. I came here and spoke about how every child needs a chance. Every child, not just North Town or Summerland, or they all should be taught equally. All of our children, and the violence that's been in the schools. We have not forgotten about the death, the little boy that was kicked to death in the school. It has to stop. Parents, show up. Please show up. I noticed when they were being sworn in on the Bible, you couldn't even say the word "Bible," for God's sakes. Praise Jesus, we got these conservatives on here. Praise the Lord. And I praise the Lord too, that Donald Trump has gotten in, because things are going to change for the good, for the good. Ladies, thank you so much. I appreciate your time. I didn't even, I didn't even have to write a paper tonight. It all came off the top of my head. So, thank you again. We appreciate you, ladies.
Thank you, Ms. Norma. I'd like to invite Jordan, I think it says Hankins. Jordan, are you in the room? Yes, okay. Ms. Teri, please proceed.
Good evening, my name is Teri Schuman. I am a CCSD Support Staff employee. And March will be 19 years being in this district. I've come to many, many, many school board meetings. I first want to say congratulations to those entering our school board directors tonight. I was fortunate to be on the committee to endorse some of you and to see you go out and do the hard work and knock on doors and do what it took to get where you are now. I am so blessed to see you up here. And we endorsed you because we believe in you. We believe that you are capable of doing this job. I do have one request though, and that request is that each of you take the time to listen to one another. Don't have your voice override the one you're trying to speak to or you feel like their head must be really super hard tonight. They're not listening. Take the time to explain why you're saying what you're saying. Take the time to care about who you're speaking to. You have been given a huge responsibility. And for that reason, we need to work together. Support staff needs you, ESEA needs you as much as CCEA needs you. And we are calling on all of you to work together. I'm going to ask again, listen, that's the main key here. You've got to work together. You've got to be on the same page. To have somebody overriding you when you're trying to say something is not going to work anymore. I've seen school board meetings where that actually took place. And we don't need that anymore, guys. We need a fresh start, starting tonight. And we just ask that you take the time to get to know each other. Some of them you might not like so much, but maybe as you work together, you'll come to appreciate why they're here too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Teri. And then our last person, Jordan.
Hey, guys. Good evening and congratulations all. My name is Jordan Hankins, and I am the founder and executive director of the Southern Nevada Black Educators Initiative. The Southern Nevada Black Educators Initiative was founded out of a need, necessity. I never had a black educator growing up, and I graduated from the Clark County School District in 2008. So through my time with the teachers' union and other organizations, I decided to start my own organization. And what we do is support the needs and expand the black teacher pipeline here in the Clark County School District. Currently, we only have about 1,300 out of 18,000 licensed professionals who identify as black. And if you didn't know, if a student has at least one black teacher between grades K through 3, they're more likely to graduate college, sorry, graduate high school and take college interest exam. So I'm standing before you today to ask if you would consider supporting the Amplifying Black Voices Critical Mentorship Program. And that's a mentorship program that we've had for, what, three or four years now? And it's in partnership with the University of Nevada, Las Vegas, the College of Education. And what we do is mentor those college of ed students who are looking to become educators in the district. So through our research, what we learned was black students were not graduating that program due to a lack of representation and other barriers. So with our program, we've seen a huge difference or huge push in our students who are actually graduating that program and going off to become educators in the district. And another program that I'd like you to consider to support is the ABC to PhD program, which is launching on February 1st. And it's in partnership with Nevada Partners. And through that, we are providing math and science, and math, science, and reading interventions to our babies to make sure that they are reading and learning on a competitive level and preparing them for college and success. So I would ask again that you support our ABC, sorry, the Amplifying Black Voices Critical Mentorship Program. And we're not asking for funding, we're just asking for CUs. I've been asking the district for about three years now to support this initiative, but we haven't really gotten anywhere. So we would just love if our educators could just earn CUs at the bare minimum. They really want to do this work. They don't even want to get paid for it. They're like, hey, we just, we just need some CUs. They like salary advancements and some form of upward mobility for our educators, because we know their pay is, and that's something that we like to work on as well, to make sure our educators are being paid more. But that's a whole other story for another day with CCEA. And I hope we can all work together on that initiative as well. So thank you so much for your time, and again, congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mr. Caruso, are you in the audience? I want to be, we have a special gift for our judges. Caitlin, can, yes. If I can have you hand out the special gift that we have for our judges. We'd like to thank you for spending this evening with us and helping us to get our newly elected trustees up to the office. Thank you. We also have, Mr. Caruso, some flowers for our newly elected trustees. If you could hand those out. Okay, as a reminder, we have a student performance out in the foyer. It's going to be by Arbor View High School, Jazz Combo, District B. Our trustees are going to do media interviews, so they will be headed out that door. They're going to take care of that first very quickly and then come back and join us. And then while we're waiting, CCSD will provide some cake so that we could mingle and support one another during the time. I'd also like to acknowledge our distinguished guests. We have the Lieutenant Governor. Here, we have Mayor from North Las Vegas and also our Attorney General for the State of Nevada. Thank you for joining us. Yes, now trustees, we are going to adjourn the meeting. That means you're going to have to press your buttons. So I'm going to, and we also have a former trustee, also Ms. Linda Young here as well. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Hi, trustee. Oh, hold on for just a second. Trustee Cavazos.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Great. Trustee Henry.
A second, trustee Henry.
I have a first from trustee Cavazos, a second from trustee Henry. Please cast your votes. And Ms. Lorena, oh, she did it? It's not coming up that she pressed her button? Okay. All right. Well, that motion passes seven to zero. Thank you so much for joining us evening and for the celebration.